...
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
President.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Tracus.
President.
Councilmember Harder.
President.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. We don't have a journal yet prepared, but I would like to recognize the court administration for allowing us to use their courtroom today. Since our council chambers was being occupied for a tax sale, we have no bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, we have no tax compromises this morning, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th district.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, 5th district.
Councilmember Dolan asked me to hold this. He was unable to make our meeting today, so this item will be held, and that will be the order.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, Mr. Chair. Item number one, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 7th district.
Receive, file, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one, 4th district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 3rd district.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th district.
Receive and file, same motion for number four, please.
So ordered.
Item number five.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 4th district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number seven, 6th district.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 2nd district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion through item number 10. This retirement plan report still does not reflect the impact of the employee raises on the retirement plan, and we'll continue that conversation.
Item number 11, 1st district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 1st district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 13.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 14, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, 6th district.
Item number 15?
15, 6th district.
Okay. Receive and file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 16.
Same motion through item number 18, and that will be the order.
Item number 19, 3rd district.
Receive, file, contract an amount not to exceed $503,372.40 be approved and awarded to LF Cuff Construction, Inc., the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, 6th district.
Give me a minute, please. Receive, file, and the deposit agreement subdivision apply be approved as recommended, please. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For the county executive, no report. Report to special committees.
Mr. Chair, please hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Public forum.
We have 14 speakers this morning, Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium when your name is called and state your name and address for the record. Adjust the microphone so we can catch your comments, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker.
First speaker today is Cindy Winkler.
Good morning. Cindy Winkler. I live in Old Jamestown area, 63034. And I'm not going to do a second first thing with the first from last Tuesday night. Hopefully you guys got chapter 10 of the books that I purchased and brought here for you. Just want to reiterate that there's no appetite for an NUCA change in the Old Jamestown area of 63034. The planning commission agrees this is not in keeping with the Old Jamestown area study or in character with the area. I'm sure that's pretty clear to everyone now. We don't want or need any more storage facilities in the area. Please be reminded that petitioners, the Baileys, BSC Holdings LLC, and Fireside Financial have been a little disingenuous in their representation to residents and people regarding their intentions for the property, both in scope of development and their level of sophistication. So if this comes up for vote today, or when it does come up for vote, I hope you'll support us and say no. Thanks. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Don Otto.
Good morning. My name is Donald C. Otto, Jr. I am the executive director and general counsel of Missouri Funeral Directors and Bombers Association. And although my current address is 1757 Woodcliff in Jefferson City, Missouri, I was born and raised in St. Louis County. The answer to the question is Parkway West. My father still lives here. My mother is buried here. All my relatives are here, and I reside in the Emmerah Home in the area as well. My great-grandfather is buried at Jefferson Barracks. And that's why we're here today, is to support Bill 201, which I think is on page 17 of your agenda, which will allow Jefferson Barracks to expand, to continue its operations beyond, I believe, the 2021. If you've seen the PBS documentary, The Undertaking, you would have seen Thomas Lynch say that the purpose of a funeral is to get the dead where they need to be. And for many years, for many, many veterans, and we have a number of them here today, and their families, the place where their honored dead need to be has been Jefferson Barracks. At a briefing in Washington, DC last year, I was told by the officials in charge of the entire operation nationwide that of all the veterans' cemeteries in the entire country, of every single one of them, Jefferson Barracks is number one on the list, those buried there that live within 100 miles of the cemetery. Jefferson Barracks is the most used cemetery for veterans of people who live nearby. It is definitely St. Louis and the St. Louis area's place where they want to take their honored dead. And that is why we support 201. It's my understanding that without this sale of the property, the veterans' administration spaces will begin to run out in 2021. I have participated in a number of funerals out, ceremonies out at Jefferson Barracks. If you've never done so, I urge you to do so. If you've ever been there, if you've ever seen what that means to people, and what that means to our community, and what it means for our honored veterans, you want to make sure that it doesn't. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Bass.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm here to speak in behalf of Bill 201, to sell a portion of Jefferson, or Sylvan Springs Park, to the United States Government Department of Veterans Affairs to give a place to our veterans to find their final resting spot. The sale of park land is often controversial, but in this case, I think it's warranted. This is not a new issue to the council or to the public. It's been debated for several years. There's been public meetings. There's been online surveys. We've tracked letters, email. Over 2,500 people have responded and weighed in on this issue. And almost 60% of those individuals favor the sale. As the gentleman before me said, we will run out of space at the cemetery by 2021. The additional 33.64 acres will allow for burials at the cemetery through 2038. I think this is an appropriate use of our land. As many of you recall, Jefferson Barracks was actually sold to the county for a park in 1950 for $3,500. What we're doing is returning this land to the government for one of the most worthy uses I can imagine, and that's taking care of our time spent. I urge you all to support this bill. I'd like to also mention that the proceeds for the bill as approved will be used to improve the other portion of Sylvan Springs Park and parks throughout St. Louis County. Once again, I urge you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Next speaker is Kira Braxton.
Good morning. My name is Kira Braxton. I'm on 13th Avenue Drive, St. Louis County, Missouri. I just wanted to say that we appreciate you all coming to some sort of, where I wouldn't use compromise or working together with the county that could afford him, wanting to work with you all to come to some sort of reasonable conclusion for the 55 Justice Service employees and corrections management. And we're just looking forward to seeing, to hear what the conclusion of that meeting was and what we have to learn. Thank you.
Kira.
Yes, good.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming forward and speaking up week after week, all of you, and advocating for all of the Justice Service employees. We have met and reached an tentative agreement. Hopefully next week, well, I'm sure next week, we'll have something to give to you, some details, and I think you'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Crispin.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, St. Louis County Council.
Good morning.
My name is Jim Crispin. I live at 1384 Westbrook Meadows Lane in St. Louis County, Missouri. I'm here representing my zone of the American Legion Zone 4 in behalf of Bill 201. We'd like to see this bill passed to allow the expansion of the cemetery at Jefferson Barracks, one of the best in the United States, so that further generations of veterans can be laid to rest with honor in Jefferson Barracks, Missouri. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Darrell Neal.
Good morning, everyone. Councilman. My name is Darrell Neal, and I reside at 101 Little Piney Drive in the state of St. Louis, Missouri. I grew up in St. Louis County pretty much all of my life. I'm here just wanting to ask the councilmen, the board, and everyone to consider August 10, my brother was fatally killed in a car crash in a high-speed chase with St. Louis County Police Department for a traffic violation. So two young men lost their lives because of this situation. So my family and the community are asking you guys to form a review board with subpoena power so we can get this situation stopped. If there is no felony involved, there should not be a police chase to where you're in a community where people walk in the street, riding bikes, and a whole lot of things could have went bad if they decided what actually did go bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Clara. And I can't read the last name. We'll have to ask the speaker.
I've decided not to. I'm the mother of Darrell Neal. My son just spoke. I don't think I'm okay.
Next speaker is Al Katzenberger.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm the layman for Jefferson Barracks Cemetery, the chapel that is out there, and for its expansion for what they call the 10th District. And the 10th District is all the folks from St. Louis County. I'm a veteran, 40 years and nine days. Wasn't helping, but at the long service. I've come from a military family. My dad served out at Jefferson Barracks. And he actually got a citizenship out there by serving in the military. It accelerated his time so they could get a citizenship. It's a holy place for me. I spent my childhood out there. My dad told me when I was a little kid, he even saw Judy Garland perform out there. I don't remember it, but that's what he told me. So I've been out there for a long, long time. It's Sylvan Springs is not very well used by it. And as you know, there's another large park, over 400 acres nearby. It's unfortunate that we need this land, but it's very well needed by a lot of people. I currently had a brother involved who is a hypnotist, a veteran of the Navy, like myself. His dad is buried out there. It was mother's. I have many relatives out there, and I'm very concerned about the future of what's happening to different victims. It's a beautiful place, and I travel around the country. I go around and see these other cemeteries, and it's a very well taken care of cemetery. The stat out there is just the first word. The other thing, too, that I'd like to bring to your attention, there's another cemetery nearby, and some of you need to pay attention to it. 18 thousand souls are buried, and they're being neglected. It's owned by a quarry company nearby, and it's called the Old Robert F. Hospital Cemetery. It's being neglected. It has weeds as tall as this room. And you should be checking into it. It's a disrespect for the families for us that you made into a park. They live in passive parks. You want to see one? It's called St. Marcus Park on Broadway and King Highway. So you could get some parkland back, and maybe use some of the sales money to improve that area because it's a travesty that those souls are over there. Even the way they were buried was a travesty because they were stacked on top of each other in those pits over there. Terrible situation. I'm a hypnotist because I used to visit that area because head workers down there. And terrible thing to see what they were doing to those souls. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Al.
Next speaker is Arnie Dinon.
Thank you, members of the county council. My name is Arnie A.C. Dinon. My address is P.O. Box 1535, Valens. And I'm a civic and public advocate. I'm the vice chief of state office and director of public director. And I'm here to complain about the court system and Judge Michael D. Burton. I'm here for discriminatory practices, incommunitar treatment, civil rights violations, being held the political prisoner, hate inside of this building, and your prison, violation of the Constitution of the State and the United States Government, the Eighth Amendment, cruel and unusual punishment. I've never ever seen anyone be treated as harshly and badly as I have been treated. And it's all over an $893 transcript fee. My complaint last week was of Judge Michael D. Burton and county employees and Department of Justice Services. After being treated like a fifth-class citizen buried in incommunitar treatment and held as a political prisoner while having a heart attack all over a civil issue of $893 transcript fee in which I could not afford to pay. I was shackled, handcuffed, and bound to an EMT's curtain taken to Missouri Baptist Hospital, and then bound and shackled to a hospital bed in the emergency room where Justice Service employees had an argument with cardiologists and emergency room doctors. They didn't have the best interest of my caring mind. Last week, I requested an investigation of the county council or a county council committee in the county executive's office. I have not heard anything from any elected official in one week. My telephone number is 314-440-9000. My email address is arnidd, D is in David, idnoff@genu.com. I have not been contacted by the county executive, no staff members, no contact from presiding judge Doug Beach, no contact from the judicial court administrator, no contact from the acting director of Justice Services, Ms. Julia Choveri. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that name. No contact from sheriff or an internal affairs complaint in the treatment of a sheriff's deputy while I was on the ground having breathing problems and having a heart attack. He called me bad names, undesirable names that you don't even want to hear that I was called. Didn't invite anybody, didn't cause any problems, did what they told me to do. No contact from the Department of Public Health in the non-treatment from the nursing staff inside the prison. No contact from county police for state law violations, harsh treatment, discrimination, civil rights violations, all over $893.
Arnie, can you wrap up your comments?
There were injuries to my ankles, lack proper medical treatment, treated like a slab of meat and thrown into a cell. Assaulted, being pushed and shoved, slapped, spit on. And I can go, I've got pages of notes, so I will, in my comments. But I am looking for an investigation. I will come each and every week to the county council. I will go through my story. Do you know exactly what I'm saying? And I'm going to testify. There need to be changes in the county court system. You know what? I'm a benevolent human being. I work for my community. I try to be the best and to be the better world. And to be treated like this by a judge, by your Justice Services employees, is despicable, un humane, unethical, and violation of your standard operating procedures. And I'm asking and begging you as a council to do an investigation in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Arnie.
Next speaker is Marquita Fletcher.
Good morning, county council. I had a speech prepared, but now Ms. Kirby said what she said. I guess I'll leave this alone. But I wanted to thank you guys, and I appreciate you, Ms. Kirby, for all your hard work that you have done for the correction and Justice Service staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of the council members for participating, so I don't want to take that credit.
That may be true, but I do want to point out that it was Ms. Erby and her leadership that got this done. So kudos to you, Hazel.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Zachy Barudy.
Good morning, councilmen. My name is Zachy Barudy. I reside at 812 Saxon Court. I'm here on behalf of the Universal African People's Organization as well as the family of Clara McCheese. I'm here, first of all, to, I was hoping Executive Steve Stinger was here, but I'm asking Steve Stinger, along with all the rest of you, to condemn the most recent high-speed chase that ended in the death of two gentlemen, a 49-year-old gentleman as well as a 59-year-old gentleman that was caused by a St. Louis County police officer who lied and said it was no chase according to the St. Louis postal dispatch as well as Channel 2, which shows clearly why that ought to be. And we are asking you to embrace the concept of a civilian oversight review board because obviously with the video many of you may have seen, Channel 2 and other stations, clearly showed that there was an initial cover-up as relates to this chase, which they reported as a one-car crash. So if there was any clear example where citizens should be reviewing the actions of the police, then this is a clear example. So I challenge you, in terms of the police and community relationship, to join us in this call. Also, I'm very curious as to how many lawsuits have been filed against the St. Louis police, I mean county police, per the county council, and the amounts that have been settled either through the full litigation or out of court. So I would like to be able to have access to that and as you also find out for yourself. Because if there's a pattern of abuse by St. Louis County police, then that need to be put to the end. It's a damn shame that on that evening in a high-traffic area that you had this kind of chase that could have even been worse than the two fatalities that did occur, which violates your policy in terms of there should not be a chase unless a serious felony has been committed. So I challenge you. I challenge you. I challenge you. I challenge you to stand with the people.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes. And the other person was granting an extra minute. So I challenge you, again, to stand with the people. And I just called for a civilian oversight review board with subpoena power. On that note, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike LeBlanc.
Good morning. I'm Mike LeBlanc. I'm the commander of the 10th District, American Legion. I represent 23 posts and 3,500 veterans and another 1,500 family members throughout St. Louis County. First, I would like to applaud you for having this forum available. This ability for the people to come and address our elected officials should always be available. Don't ever take that away. I like it. Sylvan Springs Park transfer started 10 years ago. Started by two World War II veterans. Both are deceased now. It's a long process. We are coming to the end. I would like to plant the seed that the number used was, will run out of space in 2038. So again, let's not take 10 years. Let's not put a lot of things up to chance. Let's, again, start to look at proper planning and how to use it. Now lastly, I would like Councilman Mark Carter to stand. I'd like to give him an award from the 10th District. It's a Spud Casey from an N-1 grade. For all your support over the years, thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Final speaker this morning is Azora Liggins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Azora Liggins. Most of the people in this council know me. I've been coming before this council for the last couple of years. And I've been seeking help on my disability matters. I still have not heard back from Chairman Page, nor Councilwoman Erby, nor Executive Stinger. I'm very concerned because I'm reaching 65, and I still have not gotten information on my disability. I've been coming here like a crime is something within these corporations that must be stopped. I fought for 20 years. to prosecute Martin Harris, who works for the Boeing Corporation, who is currently stealing my money every month. And Missouri is the show we stand. I think we can all say that documents speak on the face. I have never came before you with anything less than proof, and nobody has even bothered to read it or reach out to me. I want to echo the man who spoke about the St. Louis County Courts, Judge Allen Sawaki and Judge Mary Schroeder. These judges are in cahoots with the Boeing Corporation, and I'm sure that if the prosecuting attorney's office would do their job and just process a client, just process, then it will take the proper course. But I won't, I'm a God for anyone, and I will not lean to my own understanding. But I will pray for all of you who sit here and turn your eyes and not see the truth, because this county is hurt. I've heard it over and over again, young men talking about the courts. The police are just not in compliance, and nobody's doing anything. It concerns me, these issues should rise our agenda. Every Tuesday, we should be looking at how we're getting closer to fixing things in this county. And I've been coming before you guys for the last two years, and I've got these blunt starts, but I haven't got anything that says we're moving forward. So I would like to see that happen. I understand that you have this big job of the budget, but humanity should be first. Thank you.
Excuse me. Are you saying that we've never contacted you and never helped you? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that you have never cared. You've sent me a phone letter and told me you could not help me. You told me that you did not have jurisdiction. I beg to differ. My problem is in St. Louis County, it's being created by people and corporations in this county. You control this county, the council and the executive.
Have you been still going to the prosecuting attorney's office, talking to them?
I'm not going there. They'll arrest me. So that's why I came to you, because I asked you to help me get them to do their job. See, I know the game set or play. When you come and try to do the right thing, they turn you into the criminal. So with that, we have your finger set.
Ms. Liggins, I'd just like to say this, and I'm not going to argue back and forth with you. My assistant worked with you diligently. She called Jefferson City. She did all kinds of things. We could not help you. We have no jurisdiction over what you're dealing with.
That's not true, Ms. Kirby.
And I just don't like you saying that we have not worked with you.
Ms. Kirby, your secretary has not called me diligently.
I don't have a secretary.
That is not true.
My administrative assistant has worked with you, yes.
No, she has not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want one.
That was the final speaker, Mr. Chair.
This concludes the public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number two oh six, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance appropriating and setting apart some of four hundred thousand dollars from the unappropriated amounts of the lateral repair program fund supported through the lateral repair. Bill number two oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance, many ones under twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-four, by repealing and reenacting section one, pertaining to acceptance of grants from Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, for supportive programs and services related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Bill number two oh eight, introduced by Councilmembers Kirby and Walton Gray, in ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute amendment to a contract with Chad Scott Incorporated, providing for relocating the services area and for compensation therefor. Bill number two oh nine, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance appropriating and setting apart some of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the unappropriated dollars for Water Service Fund Fund, repealing Water Service Fund. Bill number two ten, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, in ordinance, many times out of twelve, St. Louis County advised by, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, when we come in and introduce that for Councilmember Dolan.
I'll do it.
Bill number two ten, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember Dolan, in ordinance, many times out of twelve, nameless kind of vice since nineteen seventy-four, amended traffic code, by enacting and adding two new provisions to schedule section. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection.
Bill number one thirty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to drop this bill from the agenda, and it will be dropped. We'll ask council members to suggest and recommend appointments to fill this commission. There are several vacancies, and I would like to continue discussion about legislation to establish a full-time media coordinator.
Bill number one thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Wassner.
Hold on the order of business, please.
Bill number one thirty-six is held.
Bill number one eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Yes, could you read it?
Substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance, mending ordinance number twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty amended, by repealing and reenacting section two pertaining to a contract with the Missouri Department of Social Services, State Technical Assistance Team, for the provision of child autopsies and related services by the St. Louis County Medical Academy.
Move adoption of substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I move for perfection of substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Hold on the order of business to give opportunity for our representative to speak with the, not me.
Bill number one ninety-one is held.
Bill number one ninety-four, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number one ninety-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-four is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number one ninety-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-four is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number one ninety-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-five is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-six, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number one ninety-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-six is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number one ninety-seven, and this will be held. Next week, I would like to see a substitute for a one-year contract for this vendor.
Bill number one ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill one ninety-three.
One ninety-eight.
Oh, I see. It's one ninety-three in my dialogue. Okay. I move to hold bill number one ninety-eight, and this will be held, and next week, I'd like to see a substitute for a one-year contract.
Bill number one ninety-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number one ninety-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-nine is perfected.
Bill number two hundred, introduced by Councilmember Wassner.
I move to perfect bill number two hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two hundred is perfected.
Bill number two oh one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number two oh one, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh one is perfected.
Bill number two oh two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number two oh two, and two oh two will be held. I would like to see a substitute that offers other discounted fees such as green fees to retirees, and I'd like to see the fiscal impact of this legislation.
Bill number two oh three, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to hold bill number two oh three at the request of the sponsor, and bill number two oh three will be held.
Bill number two oh four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number two oh four, and two oh four will be held, and we'd like to have a committee to hold hearing next week on the by-state appropriation.
Bill number two oh five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number two oh five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh five is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to hold bill number three fifty-three, and three fifty-three will be held.
Bill number one eighty, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-one, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-one is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-two, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-two is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-three, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-three is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-four, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-four is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-five, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-five is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-six.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-six, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-six is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-eight, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number one eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one eighty-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one eighty-nine, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one eighty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number one ninety-two, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of bill one eighty-two, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-two, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one ninety-two is finally passed.
Bill number one ninety-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one ninety-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-three, there are six i's and one a's.
Bill number one ninety-three is finally passed. Resolutions.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please read resolution number one.
Whereas John C. Jack Agnew came into this world on August twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty-eight, whereas Jack married Joaquin Wadey and they lovingly raised two sons, Father John Agnew now resides in New York, and Jack would continue to reside in the St. Louis area, and whereas Jack was very active in North County politics for many years, and whereas Jack was first elected to the office of Mayor of the City of Delwood in April nineteen ninety-four and continued to serve until April two thousand eleven, making him the longest-serving mayor in the city's history, and whereas Jack was a dedicated public servant committed to serving the residents of Delwood, and whereas Jack left this world on August twentieth, two thousand eighteen, just thirteen months after losing his wife, and whereas it is appropriate for the council and all the residents of St. Louis County to pause to honor life so well lived, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis, the county of Missouri, as follows. Section one, the county council extends its heart to help the gentlemenses, for family, friends, colleagues, and former constituents of the honorable Jack Agnew.
Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are six i's and one a's.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are six i's and one absence.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one for district.
Hold on the order of business, please.
Subordered.
Item number two?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three, second district.
County council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation for a one-year contract with no renewals, and then subsequently, the department can rebid this contract. And that will be the order.
Item number four, seventh district.
I'd still like to hold on the order of business.
Subordered.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have two prepared orders to see this morning.
I move for adoption of orders number one and two. Second.
All in favor of adoption of orders number one and two? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Orders one and two are adopted. Any comments by any council members?
I'm sorry, I was missing. I wanted to ask us to do a moment of silence for our faithful, loyal employee, Craig Le Parry, who was, who was, who passed away this past week as a result of the tragic shooting at the MetroLink station. I attended the memorial service yesterday representing the council, so I signed the book for all of us. And the family was appreciative. And just wanted to acknowledge his, I think, 11 years of service and his commitment to St. Louis County and his love of public transportation. It's very tragic that, that very thing that he advocated for so was what caused his death. So just wanted to make note of that.
Yes, we can observe a moment of silence for Craig. We are still awaiting our charter amendments. We anticipated them yesterday and probably surprised to not see them. So unless there's an objection, we will recess until 6:00 PM tonight and meet in the council chamber and take up those issues. Any other comments? Okay, we'll stand and recess. Thank you.
Do all three. We don't get to be. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
This seems like the right thing to do. We don't do it very often. The August 28, 2018, meeting of the St. Louis County Council has reconvened.
Mr. Chair, the record will reflect that the following members of the council are still present. Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember Walton Gray, Councilmember Trakis, and Councilmember Harder. And Councilmember Dolan has now joined the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council return to the add-on agenda order of business for the purpose of taking up an additional agenda item received this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're here tonight as a continuation, a reconvene of our morning meeting, because the bills that were due were handled differently this time than they have been in the past. But regardless, we have received communications from the county executive. And we'll, we'll address those. Do you start with the add-on agenda?
We already, the council already took up item number one on the add-on agenda, Mr. Chair, so we'll go to item number two, sixth district.
Chair, receive and file and shall substitute bill number one for bill number 173, pass the objections of the county executive thereto notwithstanding.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
This is the transfer bill, and I know that the budget director and obviously the county executive think that this is an extreme change to how county government operates. I think it's the provision as it is currently written gives the county executive great authority to move money around without sufficient oversight by the elected officials. I know it's been like that for many, many years. This is simply a proposal to improve and give more transparency to how those monies are changed. And there is a provision in here that will allow ordinance, an ordinance to be crafted so that the county government is allowed to operate sufficiently and without unneeded oversight or restriction, which I know a couple in the audience are worried about that. So I am going to vote in favor of placing this measure on the ballot. I do think the voters should have a chance to be heard on this issue, and I hope they take the time to study and understand what we're trying to do. It's real, the goal is to improve transparency and make sure that there's sufficient oversight on how our monies are spent. So I vote aye.
Councilmember Walton Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Oh.
Councilmember Trakis?
I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Wassinger, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I too would like to make comment dealing with this, that it is necessary, it will provide transparency, and we will have a better handle on where the money is spent, the millions in St. Louis County.